Before we begin, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. And so with that said, the board is seated and tonight's agenda is as follows. Under new business, we have a number of action items to include the appointment of several individuals to community boards, including Sandra McKeon to the Community Engagement Committee. We have an appointment to the Historical Commission to include two members. Those are Sarah Green and Pamela Valencia. And I believe all of those individuals are here this evening. We also have a number of other items to include the ratification of the township Assistant Manager and the Finance Director, his action to exonerate the tax collector from further collection of the delinquent 2021 real estate taxes, which will be referred to the Tax Claim Bureau of Dauphin County for lien and/or collection. Following that, the board will take action on action to charge the real estate tax collector for the collection of the 2022 real estate taxes in the amount of $7,528,78. And then also action to approve Resolution 2022-08, which establishes the compensation for the tax collector for the year 2022, and then also annually thereafter. After all those action items, the board will take action on a number of subdivision and land development plans to include the Estates of Autumn Oaks Phase Three, and also a final subdivision and land development plan for the Blue Ridge Village Phase Three. After that, the board will take action on improvement guarantees, and finally, the payment of township and authority bills, and finally, hearing any final announcements before adjournment. So with all that said, tongue twister tonight on tonight's agenda. With all that said, the members of the board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gottschall. We'll call this meeting of the Lower Paxton Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise, and Supervisor Navarro will lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move to approval of minutes, and these would be minutes from the Board of Supervisors Business Meeting of October 19th, 2021, and the Budget Workshop Meeting minutes from the 3rd of November, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes for October 19th, 2021, and November 3rd, 2021.
So moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
We'd like to announce at this time that the Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session prior to this meeting, and will do so again following. This is the time set aside for public comment. Public comment is for items not on the agenda tonight. If you are here to comment on an agenda item, you'll be given an opportunity to speak at that time. Is anybody present who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Yes, sir, please come to the podium and give us your name and address.
Good evening, gentlemen and lady. My name is Mr. Spangler. I'm from Two High Ridge Trail in Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania. I have been a resident of Lower Paxton Township for approximately 60 years, and still have family living here. I am the previous owner of the 90-acre tract of land on Wendrick Street. It is my understanding that this tract of land is up for auction at this time. I just became aware of this in the last 10 days or so. I was not notified of the intent to sell, either email, phone, or letter. There are two reasons why I'm appearing here tonight before the board. To express my disappointment in the township's putting the tract up for sale. I feel very disappointed and even betrayed by the township because I believe the township violated the sales agreement of December 2000. I believe you supervisors have a copy of that. I have Page 1 and 9. Steve Stein can supply you with the rest of the agreement. If you look at the second where is on the agreement, it states, "The buyer desires to purchase the premises for the purpose of establishing a public park." The very last line on the first page is "An additional consideration for the purchase of the premises. Buyer agrees to name the public park established on the premises as Wolfensburger Park. That was in honor of my uncle and aunt who I inherited from." I worked with the following people back then. Tom George, who is now deceased. He was a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee and was very instrumental in my selling it to the township. I worked with Brian Latchford, the Parks and Recreation Director, George Wolfe, the Township Manager, William Hawke was the chairman of the Township Supervisors along with Mr. Seeds, and I worked with Steve Stein, who was your legal counsel. And I can't say enough how they treated me. We got along great. I want to say that in their favor. All of the people, with the exception of Tom George and Steve Stein, could be called in as witnesses to the sale of the tract for a park in December of 2000. I could have sold this property to many developers for money, more money, but chose not to. I just want the residents of the township to know that the township is selling this tract of land that was earmarked for a park, excuse me, and recreational facilities consisting of ball fields, soccer fields, hiking trails, and playgrounds for children. I am sure that if the residents had known what was planned previously, they would not be in agreement of this land sale. This could well be a future housing development, creating traffic, sewerage, and many more problems. I have sought legal counsel in this matter, and they have advised me that I have a very strong case against the township for breach of the sales agreement. So I would like to propose four possibilities that we could work with. A stay of execution on the sale of the land from a court. I will file one if necessary. Number two, I will take the land back and refund the township $800,000. Number three, I receive financial compensation for the additional consideration mentioned at the bottom of Page 1 of the sales agreement. And number four, this is what I would like to do the most. Let the Board of Supervisors halt the sale for now, so the Parks and Recreation Committee, the Supervisory Board, others, and myself can discuss this and resolve the issue. Lady and gentlemen, I thank you for your time, and now we'd like to have Bill Hornung speak about this issue also. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hi, y'all.
Hi, Bill.
Hi.
Welcome back.
Yes, thank you. I'm here to talk in reference to, from memory, what transpired back then, and what was certainly the agreement, and the effort on part of the township at that point in time to expand our park and rec system, to try in an effort to not only appease all the people who want to use the parks in the different teams, soccer, baseball, and things like that, but also to help with keeping kids out of trouble, keeping them learning sports, and keeping them engaged in an activity that keeps them away from screen time, if you will. And unfortunately, I guess I was, I am saddened too, because we did have a distinct agreement, whether it's verbally or written, depending on, that's up for the lawyers to figure out. But we did have an agreement with them that this land would be used in the form of a park and developed in such. And there is, I know, you know, developing parkland is not cheap, but there's also other avenues that we've done in the past to develop parks for lower costs than what it may appear. Grant money, in-kind donations, developers willing to put money in, because when you have parks, it increases the value of the homes in it in the township. It also has a lot of other advantages with traffic and sewer systems and policing that help alleviate and reduce costs overall. So it is, it does sadden me to see that this be sold and not be used in the shape, in the shape of a park. And so I've come here to just express my dismay, if you will, that this happened, and certainly wish it was differently. So with that.
Well, thank you, Bill. A number of things. I want to, I want to go over the big picture here again, so that especially folks listening who may not have heard what we're attempting to do here, and this is not just simply a matter of the township wanting to make a profit by selling land to developers. We have a new program that we're undertaking, our Parks Improvement Project. Bill, as you may know, we have many parks in Lower Paxton Township. There are an accumulated number of capital improvement projects that need to be made in pretty much every one of those parks. We have made a list of all those projects. We're in the process now of determining how we're going to execute them, what the exact cost will be. What is likely is that we're going to be in excess of $3 million for making those improvements. Things like some basketball courts and other things that are just simply in a, they've been band-aided over the years, but now we have to take major reconstruction of. This all started, gentlemen, before you referenced the Parks and Rec Commission, we did have discussions with the Parks and Rec Commission. This all started when they came to this board and asked if the Board of Supervisors would designate a couple of members from the Board of Supervisors to meet with members, designated members of the Parks and Rec Commission, to discuss concerns that the Parks and Rec Commission had about the condition of some of our parks and the projects that needed to be undertaken. In reaction to that, Supervisor Navarro and myself had a number of meetings with the Parks and Rec folks, and they brought to our attention these very serious needs, and then we started looking into the cost. And as you know from having sat on this board for, what, 18 years, 20 years?
24 years.
24 years. There are a lot of needs, but there's not always enough money to satisfy the needs. So the next step was, okay, we now know we have these needs in all of our parks. What can we do? How can we come up with the money to pay for it? We also have the situation of where this gentleman sold, not donated, sold the Wolfersburger Tract to the township for the purpose of having it become a park. And I'll have Mr. Stein speak to the legalities of that in a minute. Over the ensuing 20-plus years, Bill, as you know, it hasn't happened. The Parks and Rec Commission, along with a consultant that was hired, I believe, while you were here on the board, came up with a cost estimate of somewhere between $12 and $15 million to develop the Wolfersburger Tract into a park, which I assume is why in the ensuing 20-some years, it never happened. It's not going to happen. We don't have that kind of money to put into a new park, especially when we have well over $3 million in work that needs to be done in our existing parks. So basically, what the township has is a now township-owned asset that we believe, we had it appraised, should be worth approximately $1.2 to $1.4 million. By selling this tract of land, which is never going to be developed into a park, because we don't have and will not have the money to do it, we could get $1.2 to $1.4 million. The township is in receipt, so far, half, the rest will come in this year, of funds from the American Rescue Plan that was passed by Congress last year. And the parameters of that would allow us to utilize some of that money for outdoor recreational improvements. So the board has decided that we're going to use about $1.5 million or so of American Rescue Plan money. So between the sale of the Wolfersburger Tract and money from the American Rescue Plan, that would give us the $3 million-plus dollars that we need to take care of all of the capital improvement needs and deferred maintenance in all of our parks. Concurrently with that, the Parks and Rec Department has begun the process of developing a Parks Master Plan. We're hopefully going to have a grant from the county to pay for it. The Parks Master Plan, once it is completed, would then give us a roadmap for where we would go over the next five to 10 years in terms of additional amenities and improvements we can make to our parks. And that also would then qualify us to apply for various state grants, which we currently cannot do. So by selling Wolfersburger, by using American Rescue Plan money, we can take care of the current needs, and then with the new Parks Master Plan, we can go after grants to make improvements going forward. And that would be a historic investment in our parks. It all hinges on having that revenue from the sale of the Wolfersburger Tract to do it. Now, one thing we were concerned about is, and the gentleman referenced traffic and all that sort of thing, the way that tract of land had been zoned, it would have allowed a development similar to the Blue Ridge Development, which could have been a mixed-use, commercial, high-density type of development. Last month, this board changed the zoning to a new, a new designated zone that would require a very specific park-like housing development, should anybody wish to develop it, and we're not developers, as you know, with very restrictive and very specific design elements to it, to make sure that anything that is developed there would be an amenity to the community and would have low impact on traffic, et cetera. So we did take that into consideration as well. The township, several months ago, voted to sell Wolfersburger. We are in the process of doing that, and we are going to follow through on the process of doing that. But I think it's important to understand that the revenue from that is going to go into development and repair and maintenance and upgrade of parks and recreation. We're not going to take the money and spend it on something else. We sold another small parcel of land, what, for about $200,000 last year. That money's going into it as well. So in terms of the intent of the sale of that land to be utilized for Parks and Rec, that's exactly what the asset is going to be used for, just not at that site. Additionally, over those 20 years, down at Blue Ridge, as I mentioned, that was developed, and the developer was required to give to the township, dedicate to the township, a number of acres for a park over there. So in terms of expanding, we have a site where we can do future expansion. We now no longer need the Wolfersburger property because we now have that. So if you look at the big picture, Bill, all the pieces fall into place. And that's why the board decided to go down this route. Now, we do know that one of the main points, and I think one of the main motivations for this gentleman in selling to the township, was naming rights. And I believe that the naming rights are very important to you. The board would be more than willing to consider naming or renaming another park facility, Wolfersburger Park, so that that name can be memorialized in the township park system. So we're very much open to that idea. So that's the big picture, and relative to the legalities, I will let Solicitor Stein, because the very first question we asked, you were on the board, you know this, you know, take a look at the deed, at the agreements, are we able to do what we want to do? Before we do it, we ask the solicitor. So, Mr. Stein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I had reviewed the agreement at the board's request. Again, this was going back quite a number of years. I think it was December 2020 when the agreement was first executed. The township did pay the purchase price of that property. It was in the amount of $800,000, which was approximately the sum. I believe when we had an appraisal done at that point in time, it was pretty close to what the appraisal came out. So it was, it was an arm's-length transaction, and the township, you know, paid, paid basically market value for that property. There are, in the agreement, there are no restrictions with regard to selling the property to anyone else. There are no requirements in the agreement that specifically state that a park must be built there. The property was not dedicated by the, by the then-landowner. It was purchased. So I don't see any, anything in this agreement that would restrict the rights of the township in selling the property.
One of my concerns is, is when a board gives an agreement, and then that board's no longer around, and future boards come in and then violate that agreement, it seems to impact on the credibility of the board at that point in time, when agreements are made between developers and the board for what's to happen in the future. And it is a little bit of a concern in that I don't know how you get around if a board agrees to something, and then 20 years later, a board changes that agreement. I understand that things change and things happen, but sometimes it just is upsetting to see that the words of a board at one point agree to something, and then the future boards do not agree to it. So you've got to work your way around that one.
Actually, I think that's a fairly easy workaround, in that, you know, over 20 years has elapsed, and you were on the board during most of that time, and the board that initially agreed to this served for a 20-plus-year period. We had very little turnover on the board. They did an excellent job, by the way. But in that 20 years, you never developed it.
I don't know if that was part of the agreement, that it be developed by a certain timeframe, Lumen.
But 20 years?
20 years. But the other thing, what was going on in that 20 years, and some of it's still going on, is that most of that money has been, that it cost us to buy that park, has been acquired back by the township because of it being used as a fill society, a filling site for a lot of the contractors, including our own workforce. And what has happened is, in many instances, we enjoyed lower contract prices because they had a site to bump the, the diggings of upgrading our sewer system. And it's my understanding that we almost recovered most of the $800,000 in doing that. You know, it's hard to say what the contract would have been versus now, but there certainly was a lot of sewer work, and there was a lot of fill need, and, and we know that that $11 or $12 million was a lot of dirt moving, and that no longer needs to be done. So we never really, so that 20 years was basically a wait and allow it to be filled in so that it could become usable, more usable land, and cheaperly, more cheaper to develop. So that's part of the reason why it took so long to get to this point. One other point I would like to come back at, and I understand where you're going. And now it's really up to Mr. Spangler and what he decides what he wants to do, but you mentioned the naming right, and I, and knowing his, his intent for that land, and his, his parents, and certainly a naming right, but how would we guarantee that naming right be acquired or be done as compared to where we are at right now in 11th hour? It's a little more difficult, other than getting something, and I think at this point in time, because of some, you know, working around the words on a contract, we'd probably have to be a little more intent that stated.
We're, we're not doing any contract.
Okay, well, what about the naming right?
The naming rights are something that, as you know, this board can do anytime we want. I mean, we can, we can name a park any, anytime we want to name a park a name, we can just, by majority vote, name a park a name.
Okay.
We have some ideas, by the way, on that.
Okay. But, I mean, how do we, how does he back down then and say, okay, I'm not going to pursue this in legal form and do a stay of execution, so to speak, but instead, there's going to be some exchange of naming rights or whatever? And the other thing is, how does he, is there a way to guarantee that that money that's going to be achieved from the sale of the land would be used for parks? Is it going to get earmarked for parks?
Oh, absolutely. Matter of fact, we, we have projects, Bill, that are already, as soon as the weather breaks, there are some projects we're going to be able to undertake. As you know, some of the other projects that require more extensive rehabilitation or replacement, there's some engineering that has to be done before they can occur, that would take place either later in the season or next year. But our plan is that we're going to make these improvements beginning in weeks, stretching out over the next two years. And as I mentioned, it's not just the revenue from the sale of this tract of land, we're also earmarking a million and a half plus of ARP money to it as well. And by the way, the Parks and Rec Board unanimously endorsed this project. We have, we've had, and, you know, we, we didn't just pull this out of thin air, you know, as, as I mentioned, this was born from them, and we've talked to them. They're in unanimous agreement that this is what we need to do, and we think that we can make major parks improvements that all citizens of the township will be able to enjoy and have it done over the next two years, as opposed to sitting on an asset that at no point in the foreseeable future is it ever going to be developed.
Well, I think it might have been, and I understand the way things go, believe me, from 24 years, you'd be sitting in your shoes, but, you know, it might have been a great idea to keep, get Jim Spangler involved in some of those discussions, instead of him finding out indirectly by a sign being put up that that land's being sold. It probably, I think it would have made things work a lot smoother, but now it's up to what Jim wants to do, I'm not sure, but that's, that's where he's at. So I don't know what you would, guidance you would give for him in the future, you know, for him to not pursue it in, in favor of a naming right. I know if I was sitting in his shoes, I'd want some kind of guarantee that that was going to happen, but, you know.
I think, I think that's something that the board can certainly move on. All I have to say about a potential legal action is, we are 1,000% confident in the advice of our solicitor. If he pursues legal action, all that does is, instead of us doing the project over the next year or two, it, the improvements get put off for a couple more years.
Yeah, Paul.
Thank you, sir. So, Mr. Spangler, you know, I certainly...
Jim, can you come up here?
That's okay, okay, thanks. You know, I think all of us can certainly sympathize, and in hindsight, of course, you know, looking back, go, jeez, you know, maybe, maybe we could have gone about it differently, maybe we should have involved you in things like that. But I want to tell you, kind of from our standpoint, in meeting with the board and having a good understanding, I think it's, transparency is wonderful, I think we need to have transparency, so I'm going to tell you our discussions, right? So the discussion with the, with, with the Parks and Recreation Board were this, you know, we, our parks are falling apart, you know, and it's going to take us 20 years to, to catch up. But the reality is this, when you fix a park, you know, let's say a basketball court, and I'll tell you a story in a second about that. You fix the basketball court, and then you're going to have to come back and fix it again. It's not something that you fix once and it's done. So over the next 20 years, we're just going to be, you know, kind of bleeding out money. So you said that you did this because you wanted to help the township. You had and still have family in the township. Well, I want to tell you something. The sale of this park, or, I mean, I'm sorry, of this piece of property that you, you wanted to become a park for your, your aunt and uncle, that money that we would get from that, as the chairman said, nothing is going to help as much as that would. Okay? So here's my story. I got a phone call right after we met with the Parks and Rec Board from a gentleman that runs a basketball program. He said, "We can't do basketball this year." So the program that had been here for, for several years, and they were at the local school, and the school said, "Well, we can't have you here anymore." So they said, "We want to use the parks." Well, they couldn't find a basketball court that they could use. So this year, we had a program that brought kids in from, from all over the area and kept them out of trouble, and did all those things that you guys said, and it, it didn't exist this year. They didn't have it, because we didn't have the ability to fix the park to do that. So, so I'll be honest with you. The board made a difficult decision that was like, you know, if we can fix all, you know, maybe not all of our parks, but if we can get them really up to speed where they need to be, that's where we're going to help the people in the community the most, and that's what we chose to do. So, and, and the reason that we chose that is obvious. I mean, there's a basketball program that couldn't happen this year. and, and the reason that we chose that is obvious. I mean, there's a basketball program that couldn't happen this year because there was a court that, that, and believe me, we investigated everything. Could we get sponsors, you know, could we have, you know, other, I don't care if the, if it has a Nike swoosh on the, on the basketball court, you know, whatever it takes, let's get this done because we want the kids to be able to play there. It would take us so long to do. And so I, I, I'm not going to say that that makes anything better for you. But what I will say is that if that was your intent and, and, and your, for your, for your aunt and uncle, there's no greater thing that you could do than to allow us to, to do that and hit all of these parks all at once. And so, because if anything that the, the pandemic has taught us, it's that we, we need people to be outside more, people want to be outside more. And we need more outside space for them. So we can't, it's, it's not okay to have all of these parks, which by the way, I think Dolph, I think Lower Paxton has more parks than most of Dolphin County. So uh, if not the most, I think we were told we have the, the most parks in Dolphin County and we're in the top for the whole state. So we've got a lot of parks and that's a lot of parks to fix. Um, I wish this could stay, you know, as, as, as open field because I had a horse farm and, and I, I would love to just have farm fields everywhere. The reality is I grew up here and the, the place where I live right now, I used to go over there that was a dairy farm and my friend lived there. And now I live where that dairy farm is. And the reality is we can't stop the growth. But what we can do is we can make sure that it grows in the way that we want it to grow. And that's why we changed the zoning because we found a place that we, we found something that we think would really fit with more open space. Sorry.
I appreciate the township's board of supervisors position and I understand the problem you're dealing with. I guess what hurts me somewhat is that I was not notified and that kind of was a shocker because I found out through the back door, they said, you know, the track you sold to township is going to be sold. Well, I was, I was dumbfounded.
Yeah, I mean.
But I, I think if I would have got a letter, a phone call from somebody, that would have, we could have discussed that. Because uh, I was very adamant on selling it for a park. If that will help the parks, I think that'll ease the pain somewhat. Because that's was my notion in the first place to, to go that route. And like I said before, all the people I worked with, including Steve Stein, was very nice to me. I can't emphasize that enough. We had a good working relationship and we had, I don't think there was a voice ever raised between us. And Brian and I spent many days down on there, walking there. He said, well, here would be a good place for a hiking trail. Here would be ball fields and Brian was into soccer big. He said, this would be soccer fields. So I was anticipating that it would be a park.
I can understand that. And I'm, I'm.
For future reference, it's nice if you reach out, like Bill said, to the person involved. Cause I would have understood your position a lot better.
That's true. Yep. And I regret that. And I'm.
Thank, thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
But thank you. Yep.
Yeah, we, we thought we were being thorough in bringing all the stakeholders in. Apparently we weren't and we're sorry for that. Uh, but you know, the, the one thing that, that I hope you take away from our discussion tonight is that you intended for the asset to be used to improve parks and recreational opportunities for our citizens. This money and much more is going to go for exactly that purpose. And we would be more than willing to engage to have Mr. Gottschall uh, sit with you and discuss options for naming rights for the name Wolfers Burger for another property, if that's something that you would be interested in having us do.
Yes, I would be interested in discussing that with him, yes. Cause that's important to me. It may not be important to you. It's important to me.
No, we, we, we very much understand why it's important to you. Family is always important.
Yes.
And you know, it's important to you and you know, in light of that, uh, we have some ideas. We're not ready to make a public declaration of what those ideas are yet. Uh, but we have some ideas on what we can do that we think uh, you might like.
Okay.
If you're willing to discuss it with us.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Bill, it's a pleasure having you back.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Would you please come up and give us your name and uh, address?
Hi, my name's Wendy Hepler. I live at 6901 Lingelstown Road. And the reason I'm here, this should be quick and easy. We received a public notice that there would be something handling or handled at this meeting about a rezoning. Again, changing from agricultural residential to the neighborhood design district for a property that abuts ours just off of Lingelstown Road, uh, between Ergo's and the high school. And I didn't see it on the agenda. Is that going to be handled at a future?
It was handled last month.
No, no, not that part. This is right on Lingelstown Road.
Oh, 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 okay. Yes, there was a developer who was planning to request a rezoning. I believe that has been withdrawn. Yes. That has been withdrawn.
Happy to hear that. Thank you.
Boy, I wish they were all that easy. Yes, sir. If you would come up and give us your name and address. Uh, either or, as long as you're, as long as you're at a microphone so we can hear you. And this is for an item not on the agenda tonight.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
It will be relatively.
Okay.
My name is Peter Wertz. My name is Peter Wertz. I'm an associate of McNeese, Wallace and Nurk. I'm here with Ron Sekeri of Pinoni. Uh, we represent Coldwater Capital LLC. Coldwater is the equitable owner of an approximately 1.2 acre tract that's north of Lingelstown Road. And that property is located in the institutional district. Property is part of Blue Ridge Pro, Blue Ridge Development, which is being developed as a residential retirement development or an RRD. Um, on February 11th, Coldwater had submitted an ordinance uh, to the township to amend the Lower Paxton Township zoning ordinance to permit conveyorized car washes by right in residential retirement developments that abut an arterial street. We understand that the ordinance will be passed along to the Dolphin County and Township Planning Commissions for their review and recommendations and that this board will render this, this decision to adopt um, or deny that ordinance after a public hearing, which will take place either in March or April. Um, we're not here to request any action from the board tonight. We're just here to provide the board of an update on our proposals and revisions that we have made to our ordinance based on comments we received from both um, this board, the planning commission staff, and also residents of Blue Ridge. By way of a chronology and to reflect, uh, refresh your recollection, um, Coldwater came before this board informally in September of 2021 and the planning commission in October of 2021. At the initial meeting, we discussed an ordinance that would permit one car wash uh, by right per RRD abutting in arterial street. And we further proposed a restriction on the maximum number of vacuum stalls per car wash. Um, at the time, the board um, wanted to have input from residents of Blue Ridge before um, us advancing any ordinance. And that was their advice to, to um, go out and receive feedback from residents from both the board and the planning commission. Uh, based on this guidance over the last few months.
Which, which board are you referring?
What board are you referring that said you have to go and get um, you know, stuff from the residents that live there?
My understanding was it was this board. Maybe Ron can speak to that.
We told them to, that they need to start with the township. They need to start. Yeah, they need to start with staff. They need to start with staff and then from staff, they go to the planning commission. We never said that.
Understood.
That is what happened, as you described.
My, my apologies. We did.
Okay. Cause I'm like, I didn't say that.
We worked with staff then and, and staff had recommended that we speak to uh, members of the community uh, to discuss whether this is something that they would like to have um, as part of their community. Based on that guidance, we had met with the HOA of both the single family residences and the townhouses at Blue Ridge um, via Zoom conference, which took place on January the 20th of 2022. And we received a generally favorable response from uh, that meeting and including a letter of support um, that was issued uh, from the uh, HOA, the executive committee of the HOA for the single family residents. And I'm sure that'll be um, admitted and shown to the board more thoroughly um, at the public hearing. We also invited residents of Blue Ridge um, to attend a meeting um, with, with um, uh, the car wash to um, discuss the proposal. And that took place last week on February the 10th at 6:30 PM. Um, again, we received generally positive feedback. Residents were understanding of the fact that this is not something in and of itself that creates traffic but feeds off of existing traffic. And they also understood that uh, the use would comply with noise and light requirements of the ordinance. Finally, we had sent out a survey to those residents who are located within the apartments of Blue Ridge. Um, the apartments are currently developer owned, so we did not have individual addresses for them, but we are working with the owner of Blue Ridge to facilitate that survey and we hope to have feedback on that survey by the time of the public hearing. Uh, but based on the feedback that we had received from township staff and the residents of Blue Ridge, we had revised our initial proposal and our, our initial proposal um, involved allowing a car, car wash at these RRDs um, subject to certain uh, maximum stall requirements for vacuums. Uh, we came back and revised the ordinance to create um, a requirement that any lot where these uh, conveyorized car washes would be located, we have a maximum square footage of 55,000 square feet. Um, we also limited operations, hours of operations at these car washes uh, from between 7 AM to 8 PM where car washes in the township are generally allowed to be open from 7 AM to 10 PM. And finally, we include a provision that would require at least one onsite employee during all hours of operation. Um, as you might recall, again, this is only allowed um, if the, if the board were inclined to adopt the ordinance, it would only permit these conveyorized car washes as part of RRDs that abut an arterial street. It limits the application of this ordinance to three properties that are um, located within the township. Um, and we're here tonight just to provide an update of, of where we're at and the steps we've taken since our um, initial meeting and coming before the board in September. And also um, just to get a feel for the board, I understand that this is, this will be subject of a public hearing. Um, and we're not looking for any commitment or anything of that sort, obviously, but just to get some feedback from the board uh, because we understand that the board um, does not have a meeting associated with its, its acceptance and referring out of any petition to amend the zoning ordinance. Um, but our uh, Coldwater is, as you know, the equitable owner of this property and is subject to certain um, deadlines under its agreement of sale. And we just want to know that based on the comments that we provided here and the steps we've taken um, from township staff, that uh, there's nothing fatal in the board's eyes with respect to this proposed ordinance and that this is something the board um, is, is willing to review um, at a public hearing.
You're, you're out of, you're out of, you're out of order in the steps in the process. So this board is not going to, I mean, unless somebody wants to, I suppose. Yeah, we, we did explain this before. This is not the time where this board weighs in. Uh, you know, you have to go through all the appropriate steps uh, between the planning commission and staff, et cetera, to get to the ordinance hearing. At which point then it's appropriate for you to present what you just presented to us. We're not going to render an opinion in advance of going through the process.
No, we, I, we completely understand that in the process, moving forward for the review and recommendation in the public hearing. Um, our position is that, you know, as equitable owner and having deadlines associated with our agreement of sale, this is a relatively lengthy process. Um, and we want to ensure that moving forward with this petition without having the um, the luxury of, of, of coming before the board and having these informal discussions about the contents.
Where you're, you're, we're not going to have the informal or formal discussions at this point. It's not the appropriate point in the process for us to do that. Uh, we understand the process takes a certain amount of time and you know, you are engaged in the process. So at the appropriate time, we'll be happy to entertain and offer our opinions, but we're not there yet. It would be inappropriate for us to weigh in at this point.
I understand the board's position. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment for an item not on the agenda this evening? Okay. Seeing none, chairman and board member comments. Board members, Mrs. Lindsay.
I do have some. I haven't been together for a couple of weeks. Um, Mr. Dudd and myself, two weeks ago, met with the TNR volunteers. That's our trap neuter and return program. Just want to give you a quick update. First of all, I want to thank um, our community officer, uh, Chucky Grub for taking this on and our volunteer in the township is Larry Wasser and him and his volunteers. Wow, if we didn't have them, we would not have this program. So in 2020, um, we paid out 80 vouchers which uh, prevented 240 kittens from not being born. Um, and in that, in 2020, we also pu- uh, purchased four traps. In 2021, we paid out 139 vouchers, which prevented 560 kittens from not being born. We also uh, again, purchased uh, some additional traps. So the 139 vouchers at approximately $40 a voucher um, came to $5,560. And we had in the budget for 2021, $8,000. So um, also in 2021, they held a training session. There were 23 people that did attend and 15 of those people were new that were learning to do the TNR program. So I know a lot of people thought two years ago that this program would not work and it is working.
And Robyn, just, just to make sure we're clear, you said prevented them from not being born.
Oh, meaning, right. You know what I meant. They were spayed and neutered.
These were not fertility treatments. These were the opposite.
Sorry.
Because they are.
Thank you, Mr. Judd.
Robyn, of course, has been the lead person on, on, from the board for doing this. So it wouldn't happen without her. And these are, just to be clear, these are feral cats. These are, um, the problem was trying to reduce the population and it's going to take a while, but if you, each year, if you, if you, if you shrink it, contain it, um, you see the numbers come down and that's uh, it's been good so far.
And the vouchers are only given out to um, people that are trapping the feral cats. You cannot take a domestic cat uh, to be fixed. So in 2022, we uh, put it, uh, $8,000 in the budget again and hopefully it'll be more, you know, kittens not being born. This coming year. So, okay, that's the TNR program. Um, this is heads up for the police department. Um, Officer Wes, our K9, who we have for a year, um, and his handler is Officer Gage. Um, they are in a voting competition uh, in the country. There are three $5,000 grants that are going to be awarded. So if you could go to K9, let me see if I got this right here, k9.hometownfoundation.org and you can vote. Um, it's what, your first vote is free if you would like to donate to the charitable foundation, every vote that you pay for. And as of a while ago, when I checked before we came to meeting, Officer Gage and Wes are in uh, second place. So and that $5,000 will go towards equipment for our K9. So please tell your family and friends. It's very simple just to go on, go on and vote. And heads up for the firehouses, um, I had contacted Dustin Ross and he was forwarding it out and I saw it was on some of the Facebook pages too. So we really appreciate it. Um, this Thursday, Mr. Uh, Gottschall and myself will be attending the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Local Government Forum on the new infrastructure, infrastructure uh, bank programs that they have. And yesterday afternoon, the board was here around four o'clock and we did some pictures and some interviews for the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. They're holding a convention in April. They're going to have a parade of flags and they came and interviewed us and our flag will be posted um, that Monday morning in April. So um, kudos to the township.
And the other board members, we have cats and dogs covered. Is there any other animals we want to?
Yeah.
Uh, with that, we will move with great anticipation to the manager's report. Brad?
Thank you for setting that stage, Mr. Chairman. Uh, members of the board, I only have one item uh, this evening for my report. And that is also uh, to follow up on uh, the aforementioned uh, Parks Master Plan, uh, particularly with regard to, to that process. Uh, so as mentioned by the board chairman, uh, the Parks Revitalization Initiative does include the preparation of a Parks Master Plan, which staff is in the process of currently uh, through our consultants at YSM Landscape Architects. Uh, just as an aside, as, as the, the, the chairman had mentioned, the township did apply for a local uh, county local share grant in the amount of $85,000 uh, to fund that plan preparation. Uh, and we hope to expect to hear from the county commissioners on that uh, grant award uh, on March 1st. So uh, coming up. Um, but anyway, back to the, to the, to the plan itself, uh, as part of that uh, Parks Master Plan process, uh, we are to create a steering committee, uh, which will help guide the. will help guide the, the plan process forward. The committee will be made up of approximately 12 members, which will provide community-minded input and ensure various perspectives are considered. The township is currently seeking volunteers to serve on this committee, which will meet approximately once a month or so for the next nine months throughout the master plan process. So those with interest in parks, general recreation, or the township at large, are encouraged to visit the township's website for more information, and also to submit applications for volunteer on that steering committee. So if you are interested, take a look at the site and, and go ahead and, and submit your application. Other than that, members of the board, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gotchel. We have no items under old business, so we will move directly to new business. And our first item of new business is we need to appoint Sandra McKeon to the Community Engagement Committee. Sandra, if you would come up to the podium so everybody can see you. Sarah, oh, I'm sorry, that's a Sandra.
No, Sandra.
It's a Sandra.
Martin says Sarah.
No, Sarah's two doors down.
They both begin with an S.
Okay.
Okay, I was hoping I was at least referring to you by the right name.
That is right.
Well, welcome, and tell us a little bit about yourself, then.
I moved to Lower Paxton Township in 2015. And I'm a retired, oh, gosh, camera. No, that's okay. I just don't like, I'm a, I'm a retired psychotherapist and behavior consultant. And I've been an artist, a visual artist for the last 22 years. So I used to do a lot of volunteering as I was raising my children, and when, after I got here, I joined the Arts Council. So I've been on the Arts Council for probably four years. And when this problem came up, not a problem, but an opening.
An opening, yes.
I have availability, so I thought I'll just continue volunteering until people don't want me anymore.
Well, we do want you. What, what, what do you mean by visual artist? What sort of work do you do?
I paint.
Paint? I was painting, okay.
Yeah.
And you're, you're willing to also serve on the Community Engagement Committee?
I am.
Great. Good.
Great. Thank you for getting involved, for just getting here. That's great.
Yes, welcome.
That's how I thought I could meet people, for one thing.
Well, we greatly appreciate when folks like you step forward to fill these roles. It can be hard to get people to do that these days.
Yeah, everybody's so busy.
With that, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Sandra McKeahan to the Community Engagement Committee.
There's a motion? Is there a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
There you go. Welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now.
Now we have Sarah.
Now we're going to go to Sarah.
Are you on the right line?
So Sarah Green and Pam Valencia. Pam, if you, good to see you again, it's been a while. If the two of you would come up, come on up, don't be shy. And Sarah and Pam are seeking appointment to the Historic, Historical Commission. So tell us a little bit about yourselves, each of you, if you would.
Hi, my name is Sarah Green. I grew up here in Lower Paxton Township. Many of you, I think, know my mom, Pam Jones. And I have a professional background in library and archives. I'm currently the Director of the State Library of Paxton. And my mom has instilled in me, obviously, a great love of volunteering, so I'd like to give back to my community with my time and my professional expertise by serving on the commission.
That's great. Pam?
Hi, I'm Pam Valencia. I've been a resident for almost 40 years, moved into an old farmhouse with little history, and it's kept us busy. About three years ago, I found out about the Historical Commission, went to a program and thought, wow, these people have a lot in common with me. We're curious, we love history, and I love researching, I love genealogy, and I just think I'll be a good fit and a help to them as they do research. I did do one project with, when we, with Denise Daimler and Kristy Kessler. We looked up township houses and recorded the old, old dates. So, anyway.
Oh, that's great.
Well, you're both going to work with a group, a great group of people in that Historical Commission. Yeah.
Maybe we'll find out how the flag got its colors.
Yeah, that question.
Mr. Doyle, that's the question for you. How did the township flag? They asked us yesterday, and I went back to the blue and white from Lower Paxton High School, then junior high, but how did it, with blue and white and gold?
Let me work on that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that question, we're, we're like, we don't know the answer to that.
I'm like, you know, back to the Rangers, you know, at Lower Paxton.
It really ties back to the early 1900s with the Lower Paxton High School, you know, Lower Paxton, which was a vocational school back then. And they adopted those colors, but to see it come all the way up to the flag, I'll always search.
Gary Crispin would probably know, he was on the board back then.
Oh, and he's not even here to defend himself.
If you find any information, if you could let me know, because they did ask yesterday, you know, about the historic flag, and so, yeah.
Well, there's a task for the Historical Commission.
There you go.
Yes.
That could be one of your presentations at your meeting about the township, the township flag, so, yeah.
Yeah, and speaking of that, do you mind if we plug our upcoming Historical Commission program on Hodges Heights? It's a history of a black community. It's on March 3rd, in this room at 7:00 PM.
Oh, okay.
6:30.
March 3rd, 6:30.
It'll be our first in person since.
Oh. Ah, that's wonderful news. It's starting to get back to normal, right? Well, I think that we should have a motion to appoint Sarah and Pam to the Historical Commission.
I'll make that motion.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Welcome, girls.
Thank you both.
Thanks, everybody, on the commission.
Okay. Now we need to take a number of actions relative to the township tax collector. And Mr. Miller, you, you might want to explain why we're taking these actions?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will be the first of three actions before you tonight, which are more good housekeeping actions. The first of which, under the local tax collection law, we're required to meet annually per the state with the tax collector and officially reconcile and close out the uncollected taxes, which then the individual tax collector is exonerated from collecting, and they are transferred over to the county to lean and collect those in a delinquent status. So this first request is an action to ratify my actions on behalf of the Finance Department in performing that reconciliation and signing off on the exoneration of those taxes for collection from our former tax collector, Diane Bear.
Okay, so let's move with 9C, action to ratify the Assistant Manager Finance Director's action on exoneration of the tax collector, et cetera, et cetera.
And Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve what Mr. Miller said.
And what Lohman said after that.
Yeah. The et cetera, et cetera included the further collection of delinquent 2021 real estate taxes to be referred to the Tax Claim Bureau of Dolphin County for lean collection. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
And the next action is to charge real estate tax collector Anne Marie Lebanne, 4919 Jonestown Road, with the collection of the 2022 real estate tax in the amount of $7,528,78. That's 18,122 bills to send out, that's a lot of stamps. And authorizing the issuance of tax warrants for same, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And to take action to approve Resolution 22-08, this establishing the compensation of the tax collector for the year 2022 and annually thereafter for the collection of township taxes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Henry, if I could just, I had asked Mr. Miller this question, just so we have it for the record, because this happened a couple of years ago, we did not. So I asked Mr. Miller if we had a deputy tax collector, and he said that Mrs. Bear will now be the deputy tax collector.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Establishing, okay, very good. Okay, with that, we can now move to subdivision and land development plans. Our first item is we need to take action to approve the final subdivision plan for the Estates of Autumn Oaks Phase 3, Plan 21-10. Good evening, Mrs. Erby.
Good evening. This is the final subdivision plan for the Estates of Autumn Oaks Phase 3. It consists of 19 single-family dwelling lots and the street extensions of Colonial Road and Autumn Oaks Drive. The Estates of Autumn Oaks Phase 3 is located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District and will be served by public sewer and private water. The plan was adopted at the, or was approved at the February 2 PC meeting. There is one waiver request, which staff supports, for administrative comments and for general comments to address before recording. And there, there are several members from McNauton Homes to address the plan tonight.
All right, if you would please come to the podium, give us your name and address.
Hi, good evening, thank you for having us. My name is Lauren McDaniel. I'm representing the McNauton Company, located at 4400 Deer Path Road, Suite 1 in Harrisburg, PA. In attendance with me this evening is Mr. Joel McNauton, also representing the McNauton Company, and Mr. Tim Millot with Millot Engineering, who is the engineer for this project. We are here tonight seeking your approval for the final plan of the Estates at Autumn Oaks Phase 3, including our request for a waiver from the requirements provided in Section 18-180-512B, one of the Lower Paxton Townships of Division and Land Development Ordinance. As Amanda mentioned, Phase 3 of the Estates of Autumn Oaks is located in the R1 Zoning District, and 19 new single-family dwelling lots will be created with this phase. We are requesting, the, the site will be served with public sewer, however, we are requesting a waiver from the requirement to connect to an existing public water supply system when it is located within 1,000 feet from a subdivision. We are requesting that waiver because we've had discussions with Suez Water, and they have established that there is insufficient water pressure to service the lots within Phase 3.
So will they have wells?
Correct, yep. We are proposing onlot wells instead of connecting to the public water system. Also, as Amanda mentioned, we appeared before the Lower Paxton Township Planning Commission in July of 2021, and received approval, or a recommendation for approval of the plan. And then earlier this month, appeared before the Planning Commission and received a recommendation for approval of our waiver request. Township staff and the Dolphin County Planning Commission are in support of the approval of Phase, the final plan for Phase 3 of the Estates of Autumn Oaks, and in support of the waiver request. For these reasons, we are asking for your approval of the final plan for the Estates of Autumn Oaks, including our request for a waiver of the requirement to connect to an existing public water supply system. And if there are any questions, we can answer them for you at this time.
Board members, do we have any questions?
I guess just the usual 13 administrative comments submitted by our township engineer. This is all contingent on you guys fulfilling those. You okay with that?
Yes, we're agreeable to all of those comments.
Excellent.
Any other board comments or questions? Any public comment or question? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the final subdivision plan for the Estates of Autumn Oaks Phase 3?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve action to approve the final subdivision plan for the Estates of Autumn Oaks Phase 3, Plan Number 21-10.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
I'll approve, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Take care, Joel. We now need to take action to approve the final subdivision and land development plan for Blue Ridge Village Phase 3, and this would be Plan 2139. Somehow we lost 20 some plans in the middle of it. Mrs. Erby, if you would set this up, please?
Yes, it is Phase 3, the final subdivision and land development plan for Blue Ridge. It involves a total tract of 10.37 acres that will be subdivided to create 33 single-family lots. The site is in the Residential Retirement Development Zoning District and will be served by public water and public sewer. The plan was approved by the Planning Commission. It has three administrative and four general comments to satisfy prior to recording, and I believe Matt Fisher will answer any questions the board has for you.
Matt, if you would come to the podium, please?
Good evening, Matt Fisher with RJ Fisher and Associates, here to present Phase 3 of Blue Ridge Village. We're going to receive the comments from GHD, from the Lower Paxton Township Authority, Traffic Safety Unit, Tri-County Planning Commission, as well as HRG. We don't have any issues addressing any of those comments, that should be pretty straightforward. So I'd open it up if the board has any questions.
Easy enough. Any questions, board members? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the final subdivision and land development plan for Blue Ridge Village Phase 3?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the action for the final subdivision and land development plan for Blue Ridge Village Phase 3, Plan Number 21-39.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for wading through all the, all the other activities here this evening. Time now for improvement guarantees, of which I believe there are, what, three? As I recall, yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the improvement guarantees, 6520 Union Depot Road established, 1635 Buckingham Road established, Spring Creek Phase 1A extension.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
This takes us to payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority, Mr. Treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve payment of the bills for Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Are there any announcements? I think we maybe have gone through all of those. I would point out that the Lower Paxton Township Authority Board will be meeting, that's not until the 8th of March, the 8th of March?
Yeah, we're, Mr. Gotchel just said we're not meeting in February.
You're not meeting in February, okay. I was going to say, I thought there would be one next week, okay. No Lower Paxton Township Authority meeting next week, which means the next meeting of the Board of Supervisors, a business meeting, will be on Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, at 7:00 PM here in this room. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.